To order, roll call.
Commissioner Alomontes.
Here.
Sorry.
Present.
Commissioner Alomontes.
Here.
Commissioner Ulisa. Commissioner Valeri Uloca.
Here.
One.
We have one absence and we do have the quorum. We'll proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance and salute the Texas flag. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. The United States of America and to a republic always stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Testimonial oath of presenters, please be advised if you are here presented to present and then you are under oath before Commissioners' Court. I place comments. 1.6 approval of minutes of meeting January 13th, 2025.
So, do you think you can correct him?
I have a motion by Commissioner Alomontes.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.1 informational recognition of J.C. Garizales and James Boteo for the All United States Bowl Game for Offensive and Defensive MVPs. At this time, we'd like to recognize these two gentlemen for their invitation and actually the honor of having them as offensive and defensive MVPs representing Dimmitt County, Curriezo Springs. We thank you so very much to your parents for being by your side and for supporting you through these events. We couldn't be doing the things that we're doing here in Dimmitt County if it wasn't for individuals and athletes like you that put us on the map. So, thank you so much. On behalf of the county judge and on behalf of Dimmitt County, I want to congratulate you, congratulate your parents, your coaches, everyone that took a part in making sure that you guys went all the way to... It was San Marcos, correct? I think it was San Marcos that y'all played at?
San Antonio.
San Antonio. So, thank you guys so very much to the parents and the coaches involved in getting these children and these youth athletes to their destination. Commissioners, do y'all would like a...
Yes, I would like to take this time to congratulate these two fine gentlemen, especially your parents, your coaches, that I think y'all have had a great year and I think you're gonna have a great year next year again. I've enjoyed every game going out there and watching y'all perform. Y'all play with a lot of heart and that means the world to a lot of youngsters. Y'all are great for our community and thank y'all for your hard work and it makes me proud to be a Curriezo Springs Walker. Thank you.
Same here. I'm gonna piggyback on this speech. Congratulations, parents. Thank you for your hard work and dedication with your children in making them succeed and I hope their future endeavors come out great and proceed your... Hopefully, y'all play football in college and maybe we get to see y'all more often out there. Congratulations.
Jason and James, I want to congratulate you guys for your hard work and dedication to the sports that you guys love. I want to congratulate your parents for supporting you and of course, your family and the coaches. Takes dedication to do what you guys do, so congratulations. And at this time, I would like if we can give them a round of applause. We can have the two athletes come forward so that we can recognize you and also we were going to have a photo taken if it's okay with the parents for it to be put on the social media and also on the newspaper. So, we can have the two athletes come forward and then we'll have their families as well. One, two, three. Again, if we can have their parents come forward so we can get a picture and the coaches, Coach Gio, if y'all don't mind coming in for a picture of family. Again, congratulations, boys, and don't mind leaving for a picture of their victims or two victims, but thank you guys so much for the... Ms. Magano, please let the record reflect. Commissioner Alamontes is present? 2.2 for recording purposes, Mary East on the Ball Tax Assessor Collector, 2024, Continuum Education Transcript as per Texas Property Code 6.231. Thank you, Ms. Mary. I'm gonna put you guys on the hot spot, J.C. and James. You wanna come forward again?
J.C.?
J.C.? Okay.
We face this?
We can face the crowd for all your hard work. Thank you so much, guys. Again, thank you, parents, for bringing them here today. I know that the weather's not that great, but thank you for being here. Thank you, Coach Gio, for allowing them to come here. We always bother Coach Gio when it comes to the athletes because we like to recognize our student athletes and also our students at Curriezo Springs Consolidated Independent School District. So, thank you so much, Coach Gio, for always working with my office. Again, the parents, Mr. and Mrs. Boteo, Mr. and Mrs. Garizales, thank you so much for being here and your family and friends that came here. And keep on keeping on, boys. Don't give up. Always keep moving forward. Don't look back. I hope the best for you and I wish you Godspeed. Thank you so much. 3.1 approval of bonds. No bonds, no action. 3.2 discussion and appropriate action, approval of proclamation, earned income tax credit awareness. Office of the County Judge, Dimmitt County, Texas Proclamation Earned Income Tax Credit Awareness Day. Whereas created in 1975, the Earned Income Tax Credit helps offset Social Security taxes and provides an incentive for work. It is a federal government's largest benefit program for working families. And whereas more than 60% of all tax returns claims Earned Income Tax Credit are filed during the month of February, an estimated 25% more people may qualify for Earned Income Tax Credit by may not be aware of it. And whereas the Earned Income Tax Credit is for people who work and have low to moderate income, this includes rural residents, Native Americans, people with disabilities, non-traditional families such as grandparents raising a grandchild. And whereas the new maximum credit for tax year 2024 is $7,830 for a family with three or more children, $6,960 for a family with two children, $4,213 for a family with one child, and $632 if there are no children. And whereas more than 12,000 free tax preparation sites nationwide, approximately 4,500 volunteer income tax assistance VITA sites provide free tax preparation services to individuals that make $75,000 or less. And whereas the Internal Revenue Service, IRS, works with over 65 national partners, 300 community-based coalitions, the city of Eagle Pass, and whereas the Dimmitt County VITA Coalition have prepared a total of 140 tax returns, delivering 122,633 in tax refunds, saved over 40,000 in tax preparation fees to our local Dimmitt County constituents. Now, they'll be resolved by virtue of the authority vested in me, Martha Alicia Gomez, Ponte County Judge, the county of Dimmitt, state of Texas, here that do proclaim January 30th as Earned Income Tax Credit Awareness Day in Dimmitt County. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alomontes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.3 discussion and appropriate action to approve the airport manager's contract for fiscal year 2025. Good morning, Mr. Martinez. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Paredes. Are there any questions on Mr. Martinez? Mr. Martinez, is there any changes to the contract as of last year?
It's just the amount. I think it was 33 and I went up to... I had asked for a raise to 37 for the... Because I think I was taking out the insurance from the airport. I never found out if I had gotten approved of the term, the... Will we have the budgeting for that grade? I just added on there in the way, in case.
That's correct, Commissioner. Yes, and everything is the same, Commissioner Dubucava, to the extent that he did include the new amount, which is $37,000. And again, just for clarification purposes and for the public knowledge, there is a required mandated law that we have to have the insurance on there. So, what happens is that instead of the county paying for the insurance, we pay the insurance. So, that additional 4,000 is to cover the cost of the insurance. I have a motion by Commissioner Dubucava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alomontes. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Have a good day.
Thank you.
3.4 discussion and appropriate action, clarification on time and a half on declaration of emergency orders. In this particular agenda item, Commissioners, it was brought to my attention through our HR department, Mr. Ortiz, that there was some concerns that were brought to his office, I guess by, I don't know if it was certain elected officials or individuals, in regards to the way that individuals were gonna be paid for the time that we had the warming center. It was Mr. Ortiz's distinct understanding that when we approved the time and a half last year, and according to how he interpreted the minutes, was that time and a half would only be paid when there was a declaration by either the governor or a declaration of emergency by the county judge, which I did that, which we meet that prong. However, the second prong was that the way he interpreted the minutes from last year was that time and a half would only apply when there was a holiday. I did advise Mr. Ortiz that it was my distinct understanding when we did the agenda item last year, the intention of this court was to pay time and a half during the proclamation of emergency by the county judge or the governor during that entire period. As you are aware, the law gives the county judge seven days to have the emergency order in place. With that being said, there was a holiday on Monday. I called for a emergency declaration for the day of, excuse me, of the 20th that ran through the 26th, which is a seven days as governed by state law. The second day as well, we closed, obviously, the offices due to the inclement weather. Mr. Ortiz is wanting to know because as the way he reads it, that second day, we are not to pay time and a half because he read that we only pay time and a half on holidays. Again, the way that I interpreted, the way that I understood it from last year and when to make it all make sense, is that I can call a declaration of emergency tomorrow and there's no holidays from here to the next seven days. So, the purpose of doing that was for us to pay time and a half because there's a lot of employees that I'm very happy that showed up this time around. We offered the opportunity to all the elected officials and we have almost all, not all, but almost all elected officials send one person from their office at least to assist. And I think it's only proper, I think it's only fair that those individuals get paid the time and a half because they are giving up their time, their safety during the, whether it's a storm, God forbid some other catastrophic event that may occur in the future. So, the way that I understood it and what I thought the court intended last year was to pay time and a half if there was anybody working under the judge's orders. I had everybody sign in that worked that day. So, here we are today to get clarification because as Mr. Ortiz reads the agenda meetings from last year, he's advising me that he's only gonna pay for time and a half for Monday and not Tuesday. So, I'm gonna put it on the court's table and the court can discuss or decide what they think is the proper action to take. Does it allow whom to pay the Tuesday? It is. Anytime that, anytime that the county judge issues an emergency order, anytime that any employees work during that time, they have to report to the county judge. At that time, they're kind of considered my employees, if you will, and they have to sign in, which everybody signed in. During that time, the law allows to pay time and a half. It has to be, obviously, within our policy, which I thought that's what we did last year. But Mr. Ortiz is telling me that the minutes say only on holidays is time and a half. So, we would have to approve to allow it to be during that seven-day period.
Just real quick, I was just gonna read the minutes as they were approved last year. Amend personnel policy. Any county employee who works on a holiday due to a declared emergency or disaster by Office of the Governor, County Judge, will be paid time and a half and the rest in cop time. So, that's how I interpret it because the minutes say just on holiday. So, I was just looking for clarification because as of right now, the time will be paid, but it would just be paid during, not time and a half. But if it gets approved, then it can be time and a half. But the second concern also, we also had was for the deputies who are on the holiday, of course, they're already getting paid time and a half, but if this gets approved, does their schedule on that Tuesday also get paid time and a half?
I have a question, Judge.
Yes, sir.
So, right now, as the way it's set up, if employees work without, without taking into consideration the state of emergency, if an employee worked a holiday, he gets paid, he or she gets paid time and a half, correct?
No, only if... The way it was read, the way it was written was only in the holiday, the emergency was declared by the county judge.
Okay.
Or Office of the Governor.
Okay, because right now, you said the Sheriff's Department, they work time and a half.
Because the deputies have a different policy than...
They have a different policy.
So, don't give time and a half on holiday?
Deputies get time and a half, but rest of the employees don't.
I think, I think also what was rendered at that time was if it's a holiday or in case of an emergency, they get four hours, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was four hours of overtime and then the rest of the day was comp time. And that I was explained by Monsieur Torres, your payroll employee, that that's how we used to work. And we would get, in case of a scenario like what happened this past week, they would get, but this was a different incident, but I'm just bringing it up as four hours of overtime and then the rest would be comp time.
Well, it would just depend on how many hours they actually worked on that holiday.
Right.
In reference to the...
But the maximum, four hours of overtime.
Like for, if they came in and worked only four hours on the holiday, then it would be, you know, paid as time and a half. But if the rest wouldn't, it would just be straight. In the case of like, are we talking about in case of law enforcement or just normal?
No, normal employees.
Okay.
Because I believe we called him one time when the flooding was coming down and when I asked about this, he said it was four hours of overtime. But we want clarification also because...
That's why, that's why we have to have clarification because two different things are being done. Like in that situation with the flooding, I didn't call it a state of disaster and they were still getting paid, the time, overtime, they paid for four hours. And then three, oh, comp time, which makes no sense because now it's inconsistent. So, we have to have some kind of clarification as to how we pay. And like I said, based on the way that I interpreted and what I thought was the intentions of this court, of course, you weren't here, Commissioner Alamontes, but Commissioner Dubucava, myself, you, Commissioner Odena were here and I would like to say, think that the intentions of the court were to pay time and a half. Again, I mean, it's up for discussion, just one vote, but the whole purpose was to incentivize so that we could have employees come in to assist during this time and help. I mean, there was some individuals that signed up to work. However, we had a schedule set because we had a lot of people show up. So, we didn't want to either take advantage of the system and take advantage of paying time and a half for everybody. So, what we did was we built a schedule and there was individuals that stayed to work more than 12 hours, but they were there at that point doing it voluntarily. So, we had everything set on a schedule. And like I said, at this point, Mr. Ortiz's purpose of having this on the agenda is to get clarification as he paid time and a half during the period of my declaration of emergency or he doesn't.
Right. As of right now, it'll be, for the Monday for sure, time and a half, but the main question is just the Tuesday.
Because the way that, the way that Mr. Garcia typed in the minutes last year, he typed it only to discuss the holiday. Nothing else was discussed. So, Mr. Ortiz is going just based on that it was for a holiday and nothing else. So, on the day of this, what time did they start?
I haven't received the signing yet, but I know it's after 5:30, correct? 6?
5:30 is when I told everybody to report. We did have several of them, like Selena, that of course, through emergency management, that got there earlier because we had to set up and buy waters and foods and stuff. But everybody was told to report at 5:30. Like I called you and asked you. There was some people, actually, some of your employees that got there like at 4:00 and they started working at 4:00 because we started putting out some more cops because we were expecting more people. So, whoever got there early started working at the time that they got there because I didn't want them sitting there either, just looking at each other. So, that was on Monday. On Tuesday, everybody that was set on the schedule was to report at 6:00 a.m. Of course, they got there like at 5:30 a.m., but that's the way that the schedule was for Tuesday. So, Tuesday was 5:30 more or less to the... 5:30 a.m. or about midnight.
Manager?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Judge, based on the situation, I'm just gonna vote, but my recommendation is in moving forward, any time that we are called into a state of emergency because of the fact that it is a state of emergency, any employee that is assisting in the matter, obviously, should be paid time and a half. The way I realize and understand the situation is if we are in a state of emergency, most times than others, it's probably weather issues. There's no telling what it could be and you're walking away from your family to go assist our community, which I feel that that in itself should be compensated properly. That's my opinion.
May I ask?
Go ahead.
I think with the stipulation that the county is closed, like on Monday, Tuesday, because if we put it for a seven-day and we still, the employees, all the employees are working, the stipulation would be being that the county is closed for that incident. See what I'm saying?
I agree.
Because if they're working as a regular worker, then they're gonna get overtime.
No, I agree with that notion and that's something that I have explained to everybody that showed up that day when we had the briefing. I told everybody, depending on the weather, and I follow, I follow the orders of the Texas Emergency Department of Emergency Management. That's who, who's my boss, so to speak, when it comes to catastrophic events. And they were back and forth whether Wednesday was gonna be closed or not. I did advise everybody that showed up that day that if we did open the county, anybody that continued to work the shelter during that day would just get paid regular simply because the county's open anyways. It would be only in times when the county would be closed at the declaration of the county judge. So, I agree that the time and a half, again, as I mentioned, the time and a half, in my personal opinion, should be paid, obviously, when there's a declaration of emergency declared by the county judge or the governor and also when, obviously, the county's closed. If the county's not closed, then it obviously would get paid, regular paid. If we close, obviously, if the county closes at 5:00 on a regular day and then they gotta go work the shelter after 5:00, then of course, that would be also paid time and a half. It's any time in which the county's technically closed for business.
Judge, I have a question. And just because of the couple situations we've been, we've encountered in the past year, is there any, once a state of emergency is called in effect, is there any way that we could maybe not call the meeting, but communicate somehow, like the commissioners and yourself, or just who can assist where and what matter, you know, depending on what situation we're looking at, you know?
I mean, I think we've done...
Situation's different, but...
I think for the most part, I think we've done that in the past. I mean, at least I know I try to, when every time that we've had an event, I call each one of y'all separately. Obviously, I don't, I don't talk to you as a quorum because I don't want to violate the Open Meetings Act, but I call each one of y'all and like I did this last time.
That's my question. That's why I'm asking because I understand that open meetings...
Yeah, no, in situations, we could have an emergency meeting. That's what it would be.
That's my question.
But we would have to have a 24-hour notice at least. So if the emergency got declared right now, we would have to wait 24 hours nonetheless to have a meeting. That's just the way that the, that the Open Meetings Act, and that's specifically for, um, the emergency meetings are specifically for issues of if there's a death in the Commissioners Court, if there's a catastrophic event, if it's, um, something that's posing a threat to the community, then we can have an emergency meeting and that's within 24 hours. So is there anyone gonna make a motion on how they want to read this so that Mr. Ortiz knows what to follow?
I'll make a motion to pay time and a half, um, bring time to state of emergency in the county closure. If they're volunteering on the shelter.
Thank you, Commissioner Talamantes, is there a second?
Second, I'm sorry.
Second by Commissioner Urdana. Well, I think she meant to say, I think she meant to say anybody that's going to, to report.
For the minute, because then you're...
Okay, her, her, the motion incorrect, if I'm wrong, Commissioner, I think you meant to say anybody that's reporting to whatever place that we have to report to in regards to the emergency declaration.
So, does that include the law enforcement or not?
No, they're separate, they're, they're separate.
Cause my question is, is it paid out of the vote or fund?
It's, no, it's paid out of the same, uh, pay, pay code, they don't want it.
Pay with funds and it's coming out of ours if they're paying time and a half for them.
Yes.
But, so they get paid time and a half already, um, anytime that there's a holiday because obviously they have a different schedule. They work on a 24/7 schedule, they, they work on holidays, they work on closures. So regardless of the county's closed or not, the deputies still have to pay, um, just still get paid that time and a half.
Right. Yeah, so I was asking about the Tuesday, if we're gonna do it for the Tuesday, does that include law enforcement? Because technically that's not a holiday, so they won't get paid time and a half for that. So that's why I'm asking if this will extend for them.
We should extend for them because they were out there. To keep it fair and possible, ownership.
I feel like if they were assisting in the matter, they should be compensated.
Only if they're assisting.
Assisting in the matter, in the emergency.
And we did have some deputies that showed up and signed in, but specifically advised me like they're not here, they're not here to get credit or they're just like passing by, they signed in. Because obviously I have to have everybody sign in because then I have to report it to the state of Texas. Um, some of them were there for 10 minutes, some of them were there for an hour. Um, like I told Mr. Ortiz, I'm gonna get all those documents to him. Obviously, we have a pay period coming up, so, um, I have to make copies because I have to send them to Texas Emergency Management first. Um, but I think that, um, to, for clarification purposes, Mr. Ortiz, I think to be fair, um, is that they, obviously the deputies get paid time and a half, but if they were there actually, you know, working, um, and assisting in the, in the center.
What, what if the ones who were? If they were just on patrol, they gave the normal?
Right, right.
That, that's, I want to tell you right, they're just normal patrol, but if they were there at the center, then they had to pay time and a half.
Or does the least where the deputies were going to check on people, see if they wanted to go to the center?
That, that's, I don't...
That's, that's one of the questions I got.
That would be reporting to, to the center.
Well, if they don't report, you go and sign in and then go and look for people, so. And other than the radio where...
Judge, well, we're out there, they were regular duty, so, I mean, now if I had a call of somebody from their day off, their time off...
That's what I, I agree with you, Sheriff, thank you.
If they're on duty right now, they're already getting paid for being out there.
I appreciate that, Sheriff.
It'd be just if, like, say if I had a call, units that were on duty come in, tell them...
They would get the time and a half.
Yeah, I'll be out there, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
So if they happen, they'll note it?
Oh, no, it'll be noted because they're gonna be coming on the day off or, it's gonna be noted.
And, and the sheriff's pretty good, him and the chief, I keep a constant, constant communication. And like last year that we had an actual deputy that was there, then I could understand. But if they're on regular duty like the sheriff says, then I would expect it just to get paid regular. Thank you, Sheriff.
Office of motion to say that if we reported Emergency Management, then they pay time and a half. And other employees are not paying.
For the deputies.
Or did I have to there?
I was, I was trying to get...
Is it that, that, not for, the after, you're like, get a serious, or not?
I have a question. Were specifying on the shelter credit?
No, shelter, that's not the proper word, the proper word is an emergency declaration. Because we've had to declare emergency before and, and you, your, your staff has helped when the school shut down, remember with the water? So let me make it, let me clarify it again. And, um, Commissioner Talamantes, you can advise me if this is how you want your motion to be. The motion's going to be that any employee of Dimmitt County, with the exception of the Sheriff's deputies because they have a different schedule and a different policy, any Dimmitt County employee that get, that is, uh, working during a declaration of emergency by the county judge and/or the governor of Texas, who reports to any event that is considered a declaration of emergency by the county judge, will be getting paid time and a half while there is closures of the county and/or a holiday. Is that better, Mr. Ortiz? Well, I mean, we, we need to know because you're the one that's having the concern.
I mean, what I'm taking away from it is if, you're only getting it if you want to be free on, in the sense of Tuesday, you're only getting it if you want to be there, that's what I'm understanding.
Well, and, okay, let me clarify it again, Mr. Ortiz. Any, 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 any person that, any employee, any employee that reports to the county judge's office for declaration of emergency and they are delegated to do any, it, work, any job for that declaration, purposes of that declaration would get paid time and a half regardless if it's in the arena. Because we had some people, uh, like Commissioner Talamantes had one of her employees that reported to the arena. However, he left thereafter because he went to Big Will's to try to bring people over here. So he's not technically sitting at the arena manning the shelter, but he's still working in collaboration and association with the emergency declaration. But they would have to come report to me and they would have to sign in with me because I have to keep all the documents that I have to send to the Texas Department of Emergency Management. Then I'll turn around and give those to you so that they are the certified copies of who signed in and who didn't.
So then, in, in that sense, I think your employees example, that wouldn't go on their time sheet. It would go on whatever paperwork they give you and whatever paperwork you give me, that's how I know if they...
Well, they can put it on her, he'll put it on her time sheet, but I'll give it to you so that you can certify that he really did work those hours. Because like Commissioner Urdana had one of his employees that went to go and do like water, they filled up the whole water. He wasn't working the arena, but he was assisting the county judge's office as the Emergency Management Director to fill up the water in case we needed to have water. So his hours are not gonna look like the hours of, let's say, Ms. Sanchez who was there manning the actual arena. You understand what I'm saying? Or no?
No, no, I see what you're saying, I'm just trying to make sure I know which documents to be careful about to look at.
So then on Monday, when Ms. Van, assisting me to deliver the blankets from one to five, then she can put it on her time sheet? Because when we're out delivering in Catanitas, Currys Hill, E. Asherton, the blankets for the elderly and checking up on the elderly.
And that'll be time and a half?
That's my asking, is it gonna be...
I don't know that that's what I'm asking, because I don't think she reported to the judge.
She reported to me because I told them.
Yeah, no, but like her employee reported to me first, signed in and then went...
Yes.
Yes.
So I had, uh, two employees that came in and it was clear with them, so they volunteered their time. They didn't report to anybody, they volunteered their time to go help the sisters for, um, getting the essentials to the elderly and the creeps. Uh, but that's not on their time sheet. And then I had, uh, two employees that reported to the Emergency Management Center and they got paid their time and a half for that. But then I had that employee clock out and go with me, Mrs., we actually went to the Especie Social Subdivision, remember the program?
Yes.
And I had him come with me just because, I mean, you know, I don't want to be bored by myself. So he came with me, um, to see if anybody lost power or anything like that. But I put for an hour and a half that he reported to these emergency shelter, that I get time and a half. But when he clocked out, I did straight time with me, I just had him added to his, his time chart, time sheet. Um, I don't know if that helped answer, I just thought that that was correctly included.
See, I think in those, yes, I think in those...
Absolutely, Commissioner.
Yeah, so I think on those instance, in that instance, you can, I think Commissioner Ucaga, in that instance, if you had your employee come out on your, on your authority, then it would be either straight or comp or however you wanna give it. But for purposes of time and a half, it has to be under the executive order or emergency order of the judge. Um, because that's just the way that the law applies the order for us to have an emergency, it has to be declared by the judge or the governor for them to get time and a half. Because then I think at that point, um, if we, I, I think if we start doing that, then I think, I don't wanna take it, I don't wanna take advantage of the system is what I'm saying. Like I don't want to have, um, you know, have people at manning the shelter or going to, to assist with putting everything together for an emergency and then we have separate people over here because then I, I, I don't have their hours. And I have to turn everything into...
Well, that's why I'm asking because Patsy put it on the regular, regular time sheet. But that's what I was asking, is she gonna check, have to change it or not?
I would...
Does it qualify for her on the same note as anybody else?
I would, I would, I would say, um, and the commissioners, um, if you all wanna agree or not, but I would say, um, for purposes of any time that you call your employees out, because, um, we've had it before, Commissioner Ucaga, where we've passed on water in Asherton and you had several, like four or five of your employees and it was after hours. I would hope and expect for them to get paid, but we can't pay them time and a half because it was not an emergency. I mean, it was an emergency, but not declared emergency, so they would get paid straight in my, my opinion, or comp. However, I mean, you're the elected official, however you wanna pay it, work is allowed by, by your budget, I would say so. But for, for purposes of any time that we have a declared emergency, um, they would need to, to sign in and, and clock in with my office because I have to turn those documents in, then I'll turn around and give them to Mr. Ortiz and he can, uh, certify and confirm on their time sheet that these were the four or five hours or whatever hours that they got of time and a half. And then so any other time that's not reported would either get straight time or however you as their employer want to, uh, pay them.
Since I took the expression of the, the commissioners, the, what we're gonna do now to do, to do it, or not pay?
Correct. Is that clarification, Mr. Ortiz?
Well, uh, what I'm gonna do, correct, for all, any documentation that comes from the judge's office that says that they were working, that's the time for time and a half.
Correct. And then the other times that they got would either be straight time or comp time, however you all want. Correct.
Cause that was on, was that on Monday or Tuesday? Well, that's gonna be time and a half, or that's already gonna be time and a half.
Oh, because it was a holiday.
No, but, but he, but she's saying because Patsy didn't report to me, she reported to her during that period.
Okay, so now we're changing this part.
That's why, that's why she's saying, like, let's say...
But it's still time and a half if it's a holiday regardless?
I know, but they have to report it to me in order for it to be...
Do you understand what I'm saying? I understand what she's saying, but if it's a holiday, it's, it's already...
For everybody.
For everybody, right?
Yes, that, that's what I was saying.
Yeah.
If it doesn't happen on a holiday, it's already time and a half.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's his old order, but he was talking about Tuesday.
No, you're not on Monday.
Oh, you're talking about Commissioner Ucaga, okay.
Like, since Patsy was there on Monday from one to five, it's already gonna be...
Holiday, you said, midnight?
Yes, yes. But on Tuesday, it'd be different.
So then many all employees are getting time and a half if they came in.
If they are, and it's only time she gets.
And then Tuesday is, was up for discussion and it is time and a half since it was a county closure.
Yes.
So then we're saying that if you reported to the Emergency Management on Tuesday, then you get time and a half. If you didn't report, then you just get run straight time, that would clarify for the deputies. That would like the way they're scheduled to be.
Correct.
Correct, yes. Cause from the county closure, there's already made the opinion that says that county closure due to bad weather, that they already get paid, you know, like they're supposed to. But now we're discussing time on top of that because they came in after five to the, to the, or center, wherever they want. Cause they were already getting, the employees were already, as long as it's on the, as long as they were scheduled to work for that Tuesday, they were already getting paid for it.
Correct.
There's made the opinion that says...
That, that's what you do, yeah.
But the time in discussion was about after, you know, after five.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. You have, you got it, Ms. McDonough?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm gonna take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposition, motion carries. 3.5 discussion and appropriate action approved for negotiation on EMS contract. Um, Commissioner, ladies and gentlemen, um, before you have a letter by the, um, direction, Director of Operations, um, him and I discussed with Mr. Pereira. As you can recall, the original bid was, um, for $700,000 for, per year. We were, um, going back and forth with the whole situation with the city of Currys. Um, we were, we were asking the city of Currys to increase the amount that they contributed, um, as predominantly more of the calls were from the city of Currys Springs. The city of Currys Springs advised that they did not want to contribute any more than the, what was it, Mr. Ortiz? $150,000 or how much were they contributing? $200,000?
Uh, $12,000 a month.
$12,000 a month, so 200, about 200 and something thousand a year. Um, they did not wanna contribute any more to that. Um, so that left Dimmitt County with, um, having to go separately. Uh, my distinct understanding is that the city of Currys ended up getting their own contract with, um, Victory Ambulance for $250,000 or something to that effect. Um, so that left the county with $700,000. Um, my concern at the time, which I talked to Mr. Olivares and Mr. Pereira, um, as a chief budgeting officer, was that the amount was $700,000, which was obviously $100,000 more than the year before. And the year before, we, that included services to the city of Currys. So, um, you guys authorized me to negotiate the services with Victory Ambulance, um, given that the city of Currys was no longer gonna be there. So I sat down with Mr. Olivares to try to figure out a medium in which our costs wouldn't be so much since now we're not gonna be paying the part of the city. Um, Mr. Olivares advised me of two options that he was authorized to give, which was one for, we pay $600,000 for the next two years and that's a little bit arbitrary in how it's written. It should read $600,000 a year for the next two years, um, not $600,000 for two years because then that would make it seem like they were paying $300,000 and I don't think that's what he meant. Um, so, um, it's $600,000 a year for the next two years, which means it stays the way that we're paying now. Um, and obviously we pay $600,000, we were paying $600,000 now and that was including service to Currys. Now there would be no service to Currys, but it would still stay the same. The second option was paying $650,000, lock in that rate of $650,000 a year and we lock in, uh, for five years. So it'd be $650,000 a year for the next five years. Um, again, this is still part of the negotiation. Um, and if you guys thought that that was fair, um, for it to be approved and if not, obviously authorize me to go back to the drawing board with Mr. Olivares. Currently, we are on a month-to-month basis, um, with, um, Victory Ambulance and we pay Victory Ambulance the, um, $600,000 right now, which is the, the divided amount. Um, so, um, that's where we're at right now.
I'm a little concerned, I'm trying to go back and remember, have we not already approved a contract? have we not already approved a contract with Victory when Commissioner?
No, we opened up the bids, but we never awarded them. We never awarded, yeah, we never awarded the bid. We just opened up the bid. They were the lowest, they came in the lowest, because we had another bid from Lone Star, or what was it, Mr. Pereira? I think it was Lone Star, so Victory.
Sorry, that was the time that Lone Star submitted a bid that we could have.
Well, no, they submitted a bid, but they submitted, they submitted the same bid, and Lone Star wanted to come in and change it, because they said that they read the, the bidding process wrong. So they put 1.2 million for both inside-city limits and outside-city limits, but it was too late, so they couldn't change it. So you guys authorized me to negotiate with Victory Ambulance for services. So as of today, we haven't awarded anybody services. We've just been going on a month-to-month basis with Victory Ambulance regarding the services.
Judge, if I recall correctly, hold on, if I recall correctly, I had made the motion to, I think we had gone through the bidding process, and then it was brought back. I made the motion to approve the contract of Victory, subject to, they followed their protocol for the, the bid. However, Lone Star bided it wrong, and I made those comments during, during Commissioner's court. So I, I made a motion to.
So the motion was actually made by Commissioner Juan Carmona for county, authorized county judge Maka A. Fonse to negotiate for a lower bid from Victory Ambulance for services just for the county itself, being that the county will no longer provide EMS services per letter from city of Carrizo mayor. And that was seconded by Jose Urenda. So that was, that was, exactly, this is the most recent one. And so the motion was made by Juan Carmona to authorize me to negotiate for a lower bid. And then on the, on the month-to-month plan, that we said we're gonna be paying them month-to-month until we, until we actually had a, a contract, was motion by Commissioner Urenda, and then it was seconded by Alonso Carmona.
What, what, what date is that, Judge?
That's October 20, 2024.
I made the motion, somehow someone was on, in there, it wasn't written down that I had made the motion.
Well, we have to follow Mr. Garcia's.
No, I understand, but I, I'm explaining to.
The same as 600,000?
Again, explaining to the public and everybody that I had made a motion to accept the bid as it was, because, and you again, because Lone Star didn't follow the proper procedures, and I don't recall who seconded it.
Oh, it's, it's on here, Commissioner.
But the, the negotiation came in after the motion was made and approved, and then by then, Commissioner Carmona stated that subject to corrections, I mean, subject to negotiation. The, but the contract was awarded to Victory. How it got misplaced by there, I have no idea.
I, I don't know, I'm not, the county clerk, Commissioner, me and Mr. Garcia is the one that put this in. This is, this is the last meeting, right, Mr.?
That was the last one.
This is the last one that we.
Previous minutes, previous meetings here.
And this is the last one that we had, that discussed EMS. And like I said, it, it was to, to negotiate with the lower bid, which was Victory, because the other bid was 1.2 million, right, remember, from Lone Star?
Yeah, I mean, and we said, I'm very, how the, how the meetings were written, we had talked about the video, and how you said that it was for, you know, transparency.
Transparency purposes.
But you gotta go by the means, but yeah, Commissioner Carmona is correct. Alonso Carmona is correct, he had made the motion, as I was looking over and over, he had made the motion that, you know, it'd be awarded to us, and then Commissioner Juan Carmona made that stipulation of.
Negotiating with you guys.
And, but he did say that, you know, it was like for it to be accepted, because we were the lowest bid, and we had bid, we had bid it correctly.
And I think, I mean.
And that's what we had talked about in your office, because we were talking about, we're like, so did we bid it wrong? And you said, no, we bid it right, and I was like, so the other company bid it wrong? And you said, yeah, technically, yes, they did bid it wrong, and yeah.
So, so the way that, the way that Mr. Garcia wrote it was, I mean, the way that I interpreted was that Victory Ambulance, I guess we, y'all get the, the bid, but to go in negotiations with them to, to, to lower the price, because the bid was at 700,000 at that time, correct? It was at 700?
That was the most, most.
Here's my question, we, we're saying that they hit the bid, but to go into negotiation. So what happens if they don't negotiate?
That's what we had talked about, and the judge asked him, Mr. Pereira, and I asked him, so what happens if we don't come up with an agreement? And he, you know, said, well, I, well, does it have to get me bid? And she said essentially, yes, because she would have to come back and report to the Commissioner's court that, you know, no negotiation, no negotiation was met, and we'd have to start the process all over.
I was, we're, we, I'm going, by the way, what Mr. Garcia gave me, which was this. And I don't know, I, I don't know why Mr. Garcia wrote, I'm just following that. But like I said, we, these are the two options that Mr. Olivares had given. And so at this point, we are paying, because we're paying them month-to-month already on the amount of 600,000. But we needed to have it ratified as to which amount we're gonna go with. Because there was, like, I don't know why Mr. Garcia never put that we awarded the bid. Yeah.
So 700,000 was the original bid cost, right? And then the city decided they would give highs for 250,000?
For 200,000, we were gonna bid a lot higher with the city. They did, but the difference was that the negotiation with them was, they offered us a building for free, to house us for free. Along with, with payment.
So it's 200, 200, maybe?
Uh, 200,000.
200,000, okay. So then what did the difference be, 400,000?
And I, I think that was Commissioner, I think that was Commissioner Juan Carmona's issue, and that's what he was saying for me to go negotiate, because now they're not gonna, we're not gonna pay that part, so it should be less, and so that's why we were negotiating.
And the city had technically, they budgeted only 144,000. And then they came back and agreed for the 200,000, because like I said, we were gonna bid a lot higher to the city also. And they offered us the building and somewhere to stay for free, along with.
Thank you, sir.
200,000. So they had only been 144,000. I mean, they had only budgeted 144,000, which was the whole thing, right, that was going on, like, to begin with, the whole payment thing, you know?
Did the old skin say who?
What's that? Uh, the South Texas Road Building.
Not the CSA one. Mr. Olivares, on the negotiations, you came up with the numbers.
Uh, we had, we had talked about it before we went to go meet with the negotiations, because it took, we, we ended up meeting in, what was it, in, uh, early December?
It was December.
Yeah, it was early December.
Some mid-December, I think.
We had, we had already talked about it, Gracie and Anna. We had talked about it, and that's the numbers that we came up with, you know, when we went in there already, you know, at least try and break something, break something down.
Cause my, my, my numbers, Commissioner Du Lacava, and we discussed this with Mr. Olivares, Mr. Pereira, we were, I was trying to get it somewhere like 500,000 or something, just because we're no longer gonna be paying the part of the, of the city. And I just felt on its face, how do I justify 600,000 to the constituents when that's what we were paying before, and it had included the city? So we were going back and forth, Mr. Olivares and I, and he said he was gonna talk to his bosses on 500, 550,000, somewhere middle number. And he came back and advised me that they were at 600 a year for the next two years, or 650 for the next five years.
650 is a lot, right, but my thing is, not for five years, it should be for two years, because everything's getting so expensive. I don't know where you guys came up with five years.
I'm sorry.
To me, it should be two years, every two years. Everything is so expensive. We went to a training, also they showed us for EMS, and it's expensive. So to me, 650 would be reasonable, but for two years instead of five years. Everything keeps going on.
And, and I'm gonna be quite honest, I mean, it may not have been this way, but I'm just saying how I felt. When we were in there discussing with the judge, Mr. Pereira had said that he had met with Lone Star, you know, and they had discussed that, uh, the bid was, the way they meant it, you know, whatever. And then when we started talking about like the whole rebidding process and whatnot, I was like, wait a minute. I felt like I already had a foot out the door versus what was already done here, you know what I mean? Like, I felt like, well, you know, you're kind of, you're kind of already, you know, like, you're pushed out, in other words, you know what I mean? Like, and so my thing was like, and I told the judge, like, well, judge, I mean, and I told this is the way I feel, judge.
He did.
I said, I feel like, I mean, I'm not gonna go without a fight, you know what I mean? Like, I'm gonna at least offer something to stay here, you know what I mean? Cause I, I want to, you know?
I know, and I recall what Mr. Dennis tried to say, that it was awarded, because I remember we had awarded, because you were the lowest bidder for 700,000, and they were for 1.2 million.
Right.
For a year. And then, I, I asked, I even asked both you guys and Lone Star. I asked, did you guys know it was to do two separate bids? And you all answered, yes, and Lone Star said, we were not aware, we just did one bid, including the whole of the city. So that wasn't our fault, that was their fault. They should read correctly the paper, the act. So to me, I know we had agreed, because it was 700,000, we agreed that 700,000 were worth a bid, but to negotiate. So to me, negotiating, I mean, 650,000 for five years, uh, to me, would be for two years instead of five years.
Yeah, and like, you know, like I said, technically, I had already, and.
The way, the way.
I totally see that, but you know, I was like, I know, it should, the numbers make more sense the other way, but like I said, I already felt like I had a foot out the door. So I felt like I had to, you know, come up with something better, you know what I mean?
You guys were the lowest bidder.
I, I, I understand that, but.
Me, at this point, is when you submit a bid on a timeframe, if your bid's not properly worded, you're disqualified. It stops there. We shouldn't have been negotiating with anybody unless stated in the bid that we are authorized the negotiation process to take place with the individual, the way it is.
Yeah, the way it's in the minutes.
So that's my concern, that we shouldn't have been negotiating with Lone Star.
No, we, I didn't, I did not negotiate with Lone Star.
Lone Star did not submit their bid appropriately or adequately, so they're, at that point, they're disqualified. Just like anybody else would, and it stops there unless the commission report.
But, but I think this.
The bidding process, that they have an opportunity to.
And like I said, that's what I was, you know, like.
But I think this commissioner, I think this commissioner, obviously, maybe Mr. Garcia didn't report it right, but I think that this says, obviously, that we, we gave the award or the bid from Victory Ambulance, because they were the lowest, and to negotiate, I never spoke to Lone Star personally, myself, ever. So I was never authorized to just talk to Lone Star. My authorization was simply to talk to Mr., or to talk to Ms. Gracie, but she sent Mr. Olivares, and to talk to Mr. Olivares and negotiate a lower price for Victory Ambulance. So for me, I never even, ever had any inclination of talking with Lone Star. I never talked to Lone Star, Lone Star.
No, no, you, you didn't, Mr. Pereira was the one.
Yeah, I, I didn't.
Yeah, no, not, not, not the judge, Mr. Pereira, yeah.
But to resolve your concern, there, there was no ever, the, the bid is with Victory, and it's to negotiate with Victory, because that's what I was authorized to do, and this is the number that Mr. Olivares gave me, and that I'm putting before the court.
Can we do the number of the 650,000 for two years, per year for two years? Instead of five years, because, I mean, everything's expensive.
I mean, how, how would that cost you?
That is my motion.
The motion is 650,000 per year for the next two years. I have a motion by Commissioner Du Lacava, and it was seconded by Commissioner Urenda, all in favor?
I just need to clarify one thing, because this is common case of occasions. When we've been, the end of the comp, the end of the service, is at the end on the fifteenth, if we continue to pay the way we were paying right now, the service ends on the term ends on 15th and the end of the month. So the payment has to be done the day after that, okay?
After the 15th and after the 30th?
No, the end of the month. I'm not gonna specify dates anymore, because last time I said the 15th and the 30th, but that's not the end of the month I'm also paying. So it's the end of the term, so it's, it ends on the 15th and the end, last day of the month, and then they'll do the next day.
So my family raised 28 days.
Yeah, I mean, and I think the reason Mr. Pereira is saying that is because we go to his office the following day and ask for the check, I mean, which, like we told him, technically, we've worked up to what you said, and we're supposed to be paid the following day, correct? And, cause we even talked about it in your office, right, Judge? And he said, yes, and I mean, that's when the 15th and the 30th, like, I mean, I'm not, I'm not worried about whether the month, the end of the month, or the middle of the month, whenever it is, the date that's set, the date is that set, but, I mean, we should be able to pick up the check the following day, correct? Because we technically finished our work day, so the date that was set.
Right, but, so it's been happening on the 15th, and then I get paid on the 15th, and stuff like that, so.
2/16, the day that you, the day that you were set with my financial officer?
That's all I wanna clarify, you wanna clarify that?
You shouldn't really have an issue with.
Well, no, no, it's my state law, you can't pay in a debt until the service is done.
So what, what's, what's happening?
Say that again? Like, because we were paying the month-to-month, since like we were adjusted for a year, we were paying for the 700,000?
No, no, we were.
This is gonna be a new contract.
It's gonna be a new contract. So, so what was happening, what was happening is that Mr. Pereira had told them they were gonna get paid on the 15th at the end of the month. So they would send somebody to go pick up the check on the 15th. Mr. Pereira would not pay them on the 15th, because by law, he was advising that he couldn't pay them on the 15th, because he has to pay them the day after the 15th.
Oh, wait, no, no, that's right, yeah, cause he said that, the 15th, and then we clarified the end of the work day in your office. Cause he said you should get paid the 15th and the 30th, is what he had said at first. And so we were like, okay, it's the 15th.
That's the 15th, that's what I meant.
So, so now, now we know that it's the end of the work day, and we're waiting on the 16th.
And then another, and then, and then another thing, another thing was that, another thing was that if the 15th landed on a Friday, their offices close on the weekend, so then they would have to wait till Monday.
The next business day, correct, that's, that's obvious, yeah, that's, you know. Yeah, that's obvious, yeah. But it's like, it's just like, every time you've done, you've kind of, are you there?
The contract starts today, or when does it start? Cause we're in a month-to-month basis.
February 1st. February 1st.
So, okay, February 1st, and now, you're saying we don't want the current date. So my thing is, so that we don't go through this issue again, and we can say, here, in front of the Commissioner's court, transparency there, you know, we want that. When is the day that we should receive pay?
It'll be on the 15th, but the day after.
Correct.
And it's a business day, so if it's the 15th on a Friday, you won't get your check till Monday.
So we're talking about one monthly payment?
No, you're still gonna get that on Monday, no, you're still gonna.
I mean, I like the way you're doing it now, but I mean, I'm just saying.
No, you're gonna get.
The 15th, okay, and so then, the last day of the month, the following day.
A couple of years ago, a year.
Whether it be the 30th, the 31st, the 28th.
But you want to do it twice a month?
Yeah.
Cause a couple of years ago, it used to be on a, like, you'd get a one paycheck once a month, but then now they've did it up.
But I, I just, I just wanna clarify, cause I don't wanna go and, to the office or whatever, and be like, this is the, you know, which Mr. Ortiz has been great about giving it to us, walking it over to our office and coming and whatnot, you know? But, but I just wanna be able to be sure, like, okay, this is the day that we're gonna get paid, so that we can go pick up the check and make a, you know, just whether it be.
Just to remember the first false on the Saturday, so.
Yes.
February 1st.
So, and that's the start of the month, that's the start of the contract.
Okay.
February 1st.
Well, you're still gonna pay them for the time that, before the contract.
Right.
Yeah, they're getting.
But that's what I'm saying, the first false on the Saturday.
I'm gonna say, do you prefer twice a month, or would month-to-month be better? You prefer twice a month?
Twice a month.
Ever? Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Olivares. 3.6 discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from JP Precy One, Ms. Sonia Fides, for the month of December 2024. Ms. Sonia Fides, for the month of December twenty twenty-four.
Good morning, Judge.
Morning.
Good morning.
Any questions of Judge Perez?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jose Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Judge, I wanna thank Ms. Rosie for assisting me sometimes to figure who, I know, I'm sure Mr. Martinez didn't mention that his secretary is sick, so when she, they're not there, I get, we get customers that wanna pay the ticket, but I call into your office, and Rosie tries to vote me over, I do as much as I can, so we're there to help Mr. Martinez, and thank you for assisting me.
Three point seven, discussion and appropriate action, approval for J.P. Clerk Clelia Alfaro to attend fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five Experience Clerk Personnel Seminar July eighth through the tenth in Grapevine. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point eight, discussion and monthly report from J.P. Precinct Two, Mr. Alberto Esquio for the month of December twenty twenty-four.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
I think, Judge, I'd like to say, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Talamontes. Honorable Clerk Clelia, welcome to our county governor.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any questions of Judge Esquio? Motion by Commissioner Urenda.
Second.
Who, second?
Either or, no, I'm in the middle of the debate.
Second by Commissioner Talamontes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point nine, discussion and appropriate action, approval for J.P. Clerk Alicia Sanchez to attend the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five Experience Clerk Personnel Seminar July eighth in Grapevine, Texas. Motion by Commissioner Alonso. Second by Commissioner Talamontes. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Three point one zero, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from J.P. Precinct Three, Ms. Leticia Hernandez for the month of November and December twenty twenty-four.
Good morning, Judge.
Are you all ready? She's a better request than I am for S.C.I. IT or not?
IT.
IT.
IT? And what was any order? Okay, um, how we gonna explain?
Yes.
Um, any other questions? Motion by Commissioner De Lucava. Second by Commissioner Talamontes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Judge. Three point eleven, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from J.P. Precinct Four, Mr. Alfredo Martinez for the month of December twenty twenty-four.
Good morning, Your Honor. Good morning, Judge.
Questions of Mr. Martinez?
Everything up and ready, Mr. Martinez?
What's that?
Everything's up and ready?
Oh, yes, yes, well, you know, uh, the bid clerk is out, is, uh, being safe, and I have my part time, so we manage, but we can make a part to go.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Jose Urenda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner De Lucava. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Three point one two, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from District Clerk Ms. Marisela Gonzalez for the month of December twenty twenty-four.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Ms. Mari, I have a question. Um, I received a call from the District Attorney's Office, some of the, uh, ADAs from there, um, in regard to their concern that there wasn't a lot of, um, cases, regular, felony cases being indicted, that they were just mainly focusing on the smuggling, is that correct? Yes?
Yes, it is.
So, and, and the reason why I ask is obviously, Dimon County, this is our county, this is Dimon County, and, and we want, um, there to be justice for cases that are not just smuggling cases. So my concern is, is that the District Attorney's Office is not presenting other cases to include, you know, assaults, or include deaths, or burglaries, um, or drug cases, um, that should be a concern to all of us, um, because, obviously, this county gives them a budget, and that's to seek that justice is served for all cases, not just the smuggling cases. So I was pretty shocked when somebody from within the office called and said that they're not really doing any regular cases, they're just doing smuggling, so I just wanted to con- confirm that. And so that the court can also know that if you have a burglary at your house, you might not get it indicted, because the concern right now is just smuggling cases. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Other questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Carmona. Second by Commissioner De Lucava. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Three point one three, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from County Clerk Mr. Mario Garcia for the month of December twenty twenty-four, that should say, now, Mrs. Claudia Obviously, Mrs. McDaniel wasn't here for the month of December twenty twenty-four, but is there any information that you would like to give the court from your time that you swore into office to now, Mrs. McDaniel?
Uh, not, it isn't for this month, so you will have it on a regular schedule.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion to table the item, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner De Lucava. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point one four, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from County Assistant Chief, Fire Chief, Mr. David Torres. Motion to table was me, and then to second was Commissioner De Lucava.
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Judge. As you can see, for the month of December, we had a total of eleven calls. We had one, I'll correct you, we had two motor, motor vehicle accidents, which included the, uh, multi-big accident that we had at the two seventy-seven, Luke five seventeen, that, uh, involved a field tanker trailer, it was still, uh, department remained unseen, so the, the picked, uh, vehicle was picked up. Uh, we do have a few, uh, rash fires off to the side of the road, so we are still having those at this time.
Any questions of Mr. Torres?
Mr. Torres, is he also, that rig, that you received, the pump and everything else, did you all get everything you needed for that?
For the brush truck, sir? Yes, sir, we did. Yes, sir, the only thing that we are opinion is just to get the vehicle out there with the license cards, yes, sir.
Reimbursement, I almost
Reimbursement, yes, also for the
Did it apply for?
For the R.D.
The seven thousand, the seven thousand or something like that, or twenty, twenty thousand? Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner De Lucava.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Perez. Three point one five, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from Victory Ambulance for the month of October, November, and December twenty twenty-four.
Hi, everyone. Um, I don't have a report, but I mean, like, as we do, my, uh, Commissioner Assistant was out today, pretty busy competing for the vaccine, it's pretty loud, so. But if you have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer.
I mean, I won't interrupt the
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty-two, ten, the twenty-two, twenty-five County Elections Academy, March thirtieth through April first in Georgetown, Texas. Motion by Commissioner, who was it?
Orana first. I'm Sad.
Thank you. Second by Commissioner Talamontes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Yes, ma'am. Tax does come elections now, because it's the state, the Secretary of State.
Yeah, they're, they're both doing it now, because, um, we're, they're moving towards more of, uh, for the administrators to have, um, what was it, Garcia was telling us about? Elections for administrators, so now tax doing it, and, um, so is the Secretary of State. I had mentioned it also to Ms.
I pulled up two for us.
Yes, two of ten.
For us? It offered for Commissioners as well, right?
Um, it's just for the judge and
Yeah, I see, because I think you already said, you know, that one as well, but, um...
Three point one nine, discussion and appropriate action, approval for County Judge Martha Ponce and Commissioner Precinct Four, Five, and Seven, Valerie De Lucava, to attend the twenty-two, twenty-five County Management and Risk Conference on April eleventh through the ninth in Rock Rock.
Sure.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, all in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point two, discussion and appropriate action, approval for County Extension Agent Alyssa Cruz to attend the twenty-two, twenty-five San Antonio Last Talk Show, February thirteenth through the sixteenth in San Antonio, Texas. So, morning, Ms. Martinez. I have a motion by Commissioner De Lucava, second by Commissioner Talamontes. All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point two one, discussion and appropriate action, approval for FCH Agent, guiding someone else to attend the twenty-two, twenty-five Last Talk Show, Talk Show Romeo Gucha on February sixth in San Antonio, Texas.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner, second. Excuse me, thank you, Commissioner Urenda, second by Commissioner De Lucava. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Three point two two, discussion and appropriate action, approval for FCH Agent Munoz to attend the Culinary Medicine Professional Development Conference on February eighteenth through the twentieth in Fredericksburg, Texas.
Sure.
Who, who did the motion?
I do.
Commissioner Alonso Carmona, second. Second. Commissioner De Lucava. All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you, Ms. Martinez.
One more.
Three point two three, discussion and appropriate action, approval for FCH Agent to attend the Texas Professional Development Visit to University of Georgia on March twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth in Athens, Florida?
Georgia.
Athens, Georgia, I said Florida, right? I'm sorry. And then Georgia.
Sure, Judge.
Excuse me?
Motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
I have one of those.
There's nothing against me for you to go, but I've always voted against the district judge and the sheriff, so, sure, to attending the other state trainings.
We have, um, motion carries, one opposition, Commissioner De Lucava. Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you.
Three point two four, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from County Commissioner for the month of December twenty twenty-four, Sergeant Commissioner Urenda.
Judge, we've been, uh, roads, pressure towards the one eighty-six area with that, I have a large amount of truck traffic delayed.
Is somebody reporting, Commissioner Urenda?
I, he should be in there. But we still believe the road
East precinct one. East precinct one. No, I'm serious, was there a
No, if it's not in there, it's not in there, you can take a mind, but we still believe the road, okay?
East precinct one, Commissioner Alonso. I think this is after the No, she was asking if he's precinct one or two. Um, Commissioner Alonso?
Judge, um, we're basically done with, uh, County Road one seventy-three, just gotta go back and exit, just leave it where there's some watchboards on there, but we're moving over to nineteen eighty to start working on that one. We, we may accept twenty-seven loads of scrap material again on that road, so, um, we're basically done. And like I said, we're just moving to, uh, nineteen eighty, start fixing it up. That was five miles of road on the month seventy-three.
Commissioner Talamontes, I know you weren't here, but Commissioner Hoca Amora submitted his report for the month of December, and it seems to be that everything on here he put is in fair, good condition.
And you know, towards the end, we were just, um, we were, uh, cutting grass, and that's what he had doing towards the end, so they did do like a lot of maintenance on like the the grass, they cut it over there, the, um, value of those locations, um, but yeah, I haven't, I don't know, obviously, I haven't had a chance myself to vote if you have any cleaning or, um, to report that you did.
Commissioner De Lucava, motion to table mine, standing permission. The motion to table permission of De Lucava. I will second that. And then I have a motion, is there a motion to approve the other three commissioners?
No, they have particular
You're gonna tell me this, I have a motion to table, Commissioner Urenda.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Alonso, so at this point, we are going to motion, I have a motion to approve the reports from Commissioner Precinct Two, Alonso Carmona, and Commissioner Hoca Amora for December twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, second by Commissioner De Lucava, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point two five, discussion and appropriate action, approval to transfer employee from Roanoke Bridge three and six to Roanoke Bridge Precinct One, effective January fourteen, twenty twenty-five.
Sure.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Second by Commissioner Talamontes, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Is there road break more than utilities? Is there for utility utilities? Thank you for the
So it should be a motion to approve transfer employee from Roanoke Bridge three and six to utilities?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that still your motion, Commissioner?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that still your motion, Commissioner Talamontes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point two six, discussion and appropriate action, approval for reimbursement for Commissioner Precinct One, Jose Urenda for medical examiner certificate.
I just have a quick question. Are we allowed for reimbursement for us, limited officials, for the CDL?
If you have one, thank you. And if you use it?
Okay, I do wanna make sure.
Yes.
I have a problem, but is it allowable?
I didn't understand the question.
Is it allowable for He wants us to reimburse it for his CDL, the, uh, the exam he had for his CDL?
This is not CDL, that's for
No, it's for
It's state required, or don't ever use.
You can't use it for anything else. You can't use it for anything else.
For anything, so, practical or what?
No, if you're gonna do CDL someplace else, you can't use that, because we're paying for it.
I'm just
Are you using your CDL to count, like, the transport?
Yes ma'am, you did in the past to uh move equipment, I moved a main chair for. Alonso Calmona to 1980 and I moved a machine for Commissioner Hacaman. When we're short drivers or our drivers are cut off and we have to, like that one time, I think he was, he needed the machine, so I I ordered it.
So it'll be strictly for county use?
Correct.
Okay, so you, wait, I know, I know you drive the buses for the school, so that one is gonna use a separate or how?
Yeah, they have a separate trip that you put up as a class um. What is it, class uh whatever you did for, oh pink, for passing. Pink for passing. This is for moving equipment.
Motion? To approve?
Okay, second. If there's no second, this motion dies. Three point seven, discussion appropriate action to discuss the status on City of Arizal Springs interlocal agreements.
Judge, I put this on the agenda to see where we're at. It expired in December. Uh for what is, what are we doing now to get it like to the next meeting, to get it approved?
Um, we've been in discussion with Commissioner Orenda and I had gone about two weeks ago to go talk to them. And they were still going back and forth with their attorney to discuss, I guess, some things that they wanted on there and some things that they didn't want on there. The last, the last I heard, um which was last week, I think it was last week, right Commissioner Orenda?
Last week, you were in the structure.
Um, Mrs. Asada Garcia, who's the city manager, had advised Commissioner Orenda and I um that they were going to put in a special meeting uh because there's issues still regarding the water with the with the um.
Golf course.
Golf course, excuse me, in the sports complex. And then at the last hour, um she texted Orenda and I saying that they weren't gonna have a meeting after all because they were not gonna have a forum. So um my distinct understanding is that they did have a meeting, I think you were there at the meeting?
No.
The last meeting that they had?
No, I kept looking for something.
Well, my understanding is that they were still in discussion with. Um because they want to resolve all the issues first regarding the water before doing the interlocal agreement. And so um that's what we've been advised. I don't know, did they give you any other different information, Commissioner?
No, all I know is that what they're telling us is that they're not supposed to have any meters outside the city limits. And all the meters that we have, the Sheriff's Department, the Royal Arena, the Border Patrol are outside of city limits.
So that they have to have a meeting to have like a variance that which is will allow them, apparently that they had a ordinance that they approved. Never advised us what ordinance it was, but that they had a ordinance approved sometime. And that's something that Commissioner Orenda and I questioned because obviously we have the Sheriff's Office out there, we have the arena, and we have the Border Patrol Station. And now they're saying that they can't start new water meters for the sports complex or for the for the golf course. Um that they could, but they'll have to have a meeting for a variance to vary from that. Um and like I said, they were supposed to have a meeting that Friday, they had asked us to show up to the meeting. And uh then at the last minute, um Mrs. Garcia texted us that they're not gonna have a meeting after all. And they don't want to come into any interlocal agreement with us, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, they don't wanna do any interlocal agreement until they have everything lined up.
Well, it's not only that, because it would be, uh I don't think it'd be uh suitable in terms of any interlocal agreement with them when it's so unstable. They're wanting to charge this with the plan, like I told them, I understand your your loss, but they're wanting to charge this for all the water in the station, everything, which we explained to them, they benefit more from the county. Using the water at the golf course, for example, because people come in, spend money, and revenue for the city, hotels, gas, food, whatever. But I don't think they're really understanding the situation, so I mean, we we really didn't discuss any interlocal agreement to the to the point where their their focus was on how are we all gonna take this?
And then she also brought up something, when you brought up about the interlocal agreement, that you Roanoke Bridge, you need to stem all their part, like the equipment and stuff like that. And Commissioner Orenda brought that up, and then she said something to the effect, well, that's not entirely true, we let you guys borrow stuff to her, we let you throw trash. So it was just kinda going a back and forth thing. Um and I, we discussed about having a meeting where all the commissioners are judged and then all their councils together. But she wants us to have the meeting and the agenda to be their agenda. And so it's just kind of, you know, going back and forth and from one, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, like from the discussions um that we had that day, uh it seemed to me like the mayor said he was on board to working with us, right? But she said she had to get with the attorney or something? So.
This city ordinance has been in place for a long time, like you say, Judge, uh for a while. Did our project manager check into it before we started the sports complex? Because where did that, he goes now with no water?
No, you're, no, we we looked into it, there was never an issue.
Well, not only a project manager, our architect.
Yeah.
I mean, if I'm putting that together and I know I'm gonna need water, sewer, and electricity, I gotta know where I'm gonna get it from before I even throw the punch out.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
No, my part, my project. I I haven't spoken to Mr. Casala personally, but I spoke to my project manager, it was there. He was advised by the water that it wouldn't be an issue. Commissioner Orenda, you know that the Water Department, Mr. Camario, they all told us it was never issue. Because this ordinance that was in place.
I'm asking because you're saying yes and he's saying no, so I need to make sure.
What do you mean you're saying no?
Well, I don't, we're saying no to what?
No, you're like this, so I need to make sure. Did we all, did our project manager know about it? Order to doing the building, construction?
No, no, you, Commissioner.
About the order?
The project manager knew about it.
Or Mr. Casala?
The thing is, Mr. Casala, as the architect, we can't put, I'm just saying, we can't put the blame on the on the project manager, he's doing, he's doing what the plans are telling him to do. The plans are telling him to run a line and hook up to it underneath the rope. So he's just following the plan. Mr. Casala should have been the one.
That's what I'm saying.
But it's hard even for Mr. Casala, Commissioner, because Mr. Casala already built the Royal Arena. Uh they, he was involved with the construction of the Border Patrol video.
So what was, what is the issue then?
The issue is, it was never an issue.
It was never an issue until now.
Until now.
Until now. So my distinct understanding is, I haven't specifically, specifically sat down and talked to Mr. Casala, architect, regarding that he did advise me last Friday when he was here. He advised, because we're supposed to have that meeting, and he advised that that ordinance was, he was never advised because they built the arena. They built it. And so it was never, it was never an issue, even the mayor said, the mayor had been said, they built the rodeo arena and this ordinance never came up because what happened is you have to have water to the arena, so there's a line of water where the Border Patrol Station was built first. Then it was the Sheriff's Office, then it's the arena, and they all tapped into that line. It was never an issue before. So now, and even when 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 um Sheriff Casale was the city manager, that's when I started the project for the sports complex. And he never advised me, it was never a problem. Now, they're saying, if the mayor is saying, I didn't know about it. Nobody knew it was this ordinance.
Let's say we don't come into an agreement, where do, where do we set?
We have to get a water well for the for the golf course? The water will have to get rebuilt for the golf course, and we'll need a water well, possibly tap into the water well from the golf course to the to the sports complex.
The three water wells off there, and and I'd say large water wells. They're wired by the Sheriff's Department, which is some property, and I may be aware of that, that is considered their emergency water well. But if you don't.
Then is it to benefit, ask her to benefit them, or is it like a mutual benefit?
The inter, the interlocal agreement is just, it's an agreement that says like if they need assistance in terms of a backhoe or a blade or anything, they.
But does it come vice versa? Like are we agreeing with the interlocal agreement to say, hey, if we manage this and you need to let this is, or does it?
Yeah, that's the way it works.
You know, it doesn't just cover like us being able to allow to to help them, so it needs to come both ways.
We're supposed to help each other.
We're supposed to help each other.
That's why, that's actually why the interlocal agreement is established, to be able to assist each other when what doesn't happen.
So the reason that you guys are up is because they want to change a lot of stuff?
Well, well.
And not help.
Well, this this issue about the water, charging water for the golf course, the fire station, the placeta, all these areas which actually like the placeta and the golf course, these are fasted on to the city. The agreement back in the day, which I was no part of, was that the county would take over and the city would provide the water. I understand, my understanding is that's actually the way that I need to be always established. But now they're saying, you know, these these agreements are out the door, out the window. So with that said, I did make the move that that water well by the Sheriff's Department and their pressure system and tank at the corner of the golf course property belonged to the county, to their city, on county property.
Does that, were you trying to move it?
Yes.
Were you trying to?
I I I let them know, hey, that's county property, so we might have to offset the charge, we might have to start charging you for utilization of.
And she's claiming that it's not county property, she's saying that they went and looked at the CAD and that it's saying that it's private property, that it belongs to somebody else, not the county. So her argument back to Commissioner Orenda is like, well, technically, you can't charge me for having it on there because it doesn't even belong to you. That's what, that's what she's telling. That's the said district appraisal.
But would it be the other chance for sure, like we get like proper documentation to see like?
There's gotta be something, but but it's it's gotta be hard because she, basically what she said is they went back to check to see if what was under the city. And and she said, all it says is private property.
Private property.
Well, then it's not the city.
Yeah.
So they're more, more, more likely it belongs to the to the golf course that it's in the property, you look at it, it's right in the corner of it, and so is the water well, it belongs to the Sheriff's Department.
So then the solution to this would be we would need to really come together to come to an agreement on both things. Because I think that anything that is public use, I would understand the golf course not being a public use, but then I also understand like getting revenue in for the city. But if it's not a public use, how we charge at the golf course? Then I would understand maybe settling for like a set amount or a discounted rate for the water. But anything like the South Valley Park, anything like that, that's open to the public, I would say would fall under the dollar amount.
Kind of falls under, yeah, I see what you're saying, but it.
Because we collect still revenue on the golf course.
And so, when they rent it, you collect revenue. It it's kind of, it's similar, very similar, but I I understand what you're saying and I'm all for it. I I I told her. I'm sure with, as a commissioner's court, if you propose an amount that's negotiable, that's feasible, one of the reasons, because I did tell her, there's no way it's gonna make sense for us to keep that golf course open and be paying an X amount of water when the revenue's not in this community for a golf course like that. So we'll be forced to take money from our debtors and it's not gonna, it's not gonna make sense anymore.
Will they help us, like saying like we agree to pay a set amount, not like the full amount, because if it's.
Would you say, Judge, it's 300, 300,000 dollars?
Yeah.
We've kind of already.
We kind of.
We've already told her that, yeah, we've kind of already told her that, but she's saying that her their attorney is saying, no, we have, we have to create. Like a regular, like a regular line.
Since when I met with her on uh on uh, turning the fire station, she was looking to see, but I mean, she had, she had a group and running by the lawyer. Uh to see if they could give us at least a $500 discount, you know, that's what she mentioned, but that's as far as we thought. She never came back and said, no, I met with the lawyers, this and that, so I don't know. Maybe everything was settled, like a gentleman's agreement, where everything was like, okay, you can use it. Now they find out that this ordinance, and I'm surprised that gaining a side city council, as long as they're not bashing them, but they couldn't remember that ordinance. How about did you be updated with your ordinances?
But can we hold a special meeting to not let our attorney prepare theirs and would like kind of rectify that situation?
Yes, we'll be different.
And instead of it going through because it wasn't.
Because they couldn't get a form for them.
I think we need to call them on in the newspaper, like Commissioner Lucavas. Put out the open, that's what's gonna take, that's the only thing.
That's the only way to.
That's the only way you're gonna get them to react because that's what they did with the cemetery. They were sitting on it until the news got involved, everybody got involved, you put a repeater under somebody, somebody's gonna do something.
So then do we have to vote to put it in the newspaper or just put it in the?
I could be the.
So then we've already tried everything on our.
Motion to table?
Sumo.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Calmona, second by Commissioner Daramantes. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point two eight, discussion appropriate action, approval of interlocal agreement with City of Big Boss. Any changes to it?
No.
Sumo. Motion by Commissioner Lucavas.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Three point nine, discussion appropriate action to approve opening and installing utilities at the Vuitton Building. For the light, the water, and the internet and phone line.
Did you change it to us, ma'am?
No, she, she's asking to have everything installed, because there's nothing in there.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Orenda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Calmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Four point one, discussion appropriate action to purchase 20 GTAC fully rugged laptops from Ramco Rugged Portable to operation, Willstar Grand Ford 375903.
Judge, this one, I believe it was, it was put in last month, I don't know why I put it again.
It did, right?
It's better for the ranger?
Yes, it was put in last month. No action. No action. Four point two, discussion appropriate action to purchase 26 sets of tires for Sheriff's Off, Sheriff's Office Tacos, size 2656017, from American Tire under Storm Guarding Rat 3045009.
Motion.
What's the amount on that, Sheriff?
I believe seventeen thousand, looking for the uh.
Oh my God, seventeen thousand, six hundred forty-seven.
This one, we have to use it by February, not we'll lose it, 266. And we're only getting them for the tacos, but we're using them more.
So you're gonna buy it just to use the money, is that it?
Yes, because we have to use them uh.
It's a great.
February.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Orenda, second by Commissioner Lucavas, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Four point three, discussion appropriate action to approve cool comforts to replace 3-ton train heat pump 3 for Devon County Sheriff's Office.
This one, Judge, one of our other units went out, if you know, all the ones up front, they're like 20 years old, and we'll fix one several years, months, another will go out. This one went out, uh he's looking right now if he can find parts or to fix it, and it'll be cheaper, but if not, that's why I'm putting on for approval.
Sumo.
Out of motion by Commissioner Alonso Calmona, second by Commissioner Lucavas, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Four point four, discussion appropriate action to sign Amia Park's master agreement to become a member of this co-op.
This judge, I believe, was brought on by Selena and Monica. It's uh like say a buy board type, what they're getting, uh it's what, they're trying to get a, for us to be members of it also, they might sell laptops, they might sell equipment that they usually purchase from them there.
Is there a fee to be a part of the co-op?
Not on this one, no, no fee. I read up on it, I didn't see any fees or nothing on it, no fees.
Is this one just for the Sheriff's Office or it could be anyone in the county?
If, I believe if the county gets it, should be, well, I believe it should be able to get for anyone in the county, but the county be under the counting.
Have you heard of this one, Mr. P?
It would be the county.
The county? So they like, they like specify in, in um law enforcement, that they also have the required. Will make the motion?
Aye.
The motion. Commissioner Lucavas and second by Commissioner Alonso Calmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action, Sheriff's report? Do you have a report?
Yes, I should have them there with you. Does he have a report?
I don't have a report.
Oh, no. All in favor?
I have a motion to table, if you get it on the next one, Sheriff?
Yes, they also had the.
Motion by Alonso Calmona. Did you say?
No, I just, uh he said something and I didn't know what he said.
I don't know, I was, I was doing the regional profile on a report, that's why I thought they were.
No, I don't have any.
I'll check with them, maybe they should have been sent.
Um it does, it's not submitted.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lucavas, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Five point one, status report on Veritas Utility Compliance. Hard to understand.
I was looking at the other question that I passed by there. When are they supposed to be up and going, you know?
Well, right now, the one of what we may be that where they stake out their, their laptops, basically they're right on top of one of our active waters. So, yeah, we've gotten in contact with TechDaw and the contractor and the contractor's saying that.
They want us to?
They will have to move our line. And I, I talked to the manager of TechDaw, we're not gonna move our line at anybody's heart expenditure because that line was.
Pre-existing.
Pre-existing.
Impermeable by tech.
Yeah. So that actually, going back to what we were talking about earlier, that actually falls under the design and the engineer who designed that. Cause he should have known where the utilities were before he staked out the pole. Which all it really takes is for them to move maybe a foot one way or another. Cause they really can't because that's where the stake is supposed to be based on their looking. See, what they're gonna do later, like a forlay. So come in and go. But that last pole is right on the top, it's gonna be right on top of the six inch. So if they move, it's gonna be too close to the road and if they move out, it's too far out. I think they're turning, they're forcing because they have extra.
They have to have a access.
They have to, they want to install a turner.
I was gonna say, turning would benefit that area, is there any that drives that energy?
Thank you, Mr. Hymen. Any questions on Mr. Hymen? So motion by Commissioner Odena.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Olsukabona, all in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. Five point five financial monthly report from County Treasurer, Mr. Oscar Ortiz.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Uh, just wanted to make note, my report does look a little different than usual, but it's just because I was re-going through the government code and this was just something I had to add, just to cover each.
Any questions of Mr. Ortiz? As I was supposed to try. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena, second by Commissioner Odena, all in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries discussion and appropriate action quarterly investment report quarter one FY twenty twenty five from County Treasurer, Mr. Oscar Ortiz.
At the beginning of this quarter, um, we had a total of a hundred and seven million, ten thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents invested. And then at the end of the quarter, um, we had a hundred and twenty-one million dollars, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two and thirty-nine cents. And the interest we earned from our investments for this quarter was one million, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two and sixty-one cents.
Motion by Commissioner Odena.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, all in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Ortiz.
All right, the next one.
Six point three discussion and appropriate action approval to renew Air Med Care Network Group.
This is just the yearly renewal, um, for the Air Vev. Uh, it did go up five dollars a membership.
So move.
Second.
It just went up five bucks, you said?
Yes, per membership. Went from, I believe, seventy to seventy-five.
I have a motion by Commissioner Odena, second by Commissioner Salamantes, all in favor? Um, any opposition? Motion carries December twenty four discussion and appropriate action monthly report for County Sheriff, Mr. Carlos Paredes for the month of December twenty twenty four.
Total collections through the end of December were ten million, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Say that again, Mr. P.
It's on the third column, fourth column at the bottom, ten million, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And in taxes, we had collected eight million, five hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. We have in expenditures for the county, they sold general fund. Also the fourth column at the bottom, it's four million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand. That brings us to revenues over expenditures of five million, six hundred and twenty-four, six thirty-seven.
Thank you, I appreciate it. What did you say that we were looking at, I'm sorry, you said there are.
Five million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Let's do the revenue over. Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
And that one is four hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. At this time, it's just to accept and open bids, it's not to award the bid to open it on the next one, Commissioner Odena. And six point seven discussion and appropriate action budget adjustment between general administration.
Add it towards the JP, be not lied.
That is to cover the cost for the JP servers for the intake. So motion by Commissioner Odena. Second by Commissioner Odena, all in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries. We have claim docket, general fund, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and fifty-four cents. Dimon County Airport, three thousand, fifty-four dollars and thirteen cents. Dimon County Golf Course, thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and thirteen cents. Courthouse Security, five thousand, four hundred and seventy-three and thirty-one cents. Records Management, Management, County Clerk, one thousand, three hundred and ninety-two and seventy cents. Utilities, fifty thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety cents. Royal Arena, four hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents. Stone Garden, three thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-two cents. Local border security share, twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-one and sixty-six cents. Operation Lone Star twenty twenty-two, nineteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-one and fifty-five cents. Dimon County Parole, five hundred and eight thousand, eight seventy-six and sixty-four cents. Tax Note Series twenty twenty-three, four thousand, one hundred and seventy-two and ninety-four cents. CO of twenty twenty-one, one hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. Forty grand total of one man and five hundred and twenty-eight, seven hundred and thirty-nine and fifty-nine cents. So, by Commissioner Odena.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Olsukabona, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Judge, we have a public conference, public facility, can we open public conference?
You wanna meet, is it open public conference? For utilities or for, I have a question about my department. Um, for this regular meeting, okay? One point five public conference, Commissioner Odena has a question. Judge, commissioners, or maybe Mr. P can answer this. I know we were awarded the slap for the basketball court, but to erect the building, there was no bidders. Do I have to come back to Commissioner's Court to bid it out or just advertise it in the newspaper?
You can do the amount?
Yeah. I mean, I don't have an amount, I have to re-bid it again, put it out there for, for bids, new bids.
Do you have an estimate? Okay, how many, if it's all fifty thousand? You have to come to Commissioner's Court, put up a rest, to advertise and advertise.
I know it'd be more than fifty thousand. I would say to put it back, kind of, on our industry, get it out there, maybe, you know, you can put it on, um, our website.
Yeah, but you have to have authorization from Commissioner's Court.
I know, but that's what she's asking, she'll.
That's what I'm asking, so I'm asking you, I have to come back, any footage?
Okay, I'll do that. I entertain a mo, oh, excuse me. Thank you for reviewing. Uh, we do have an addendum, I apologize, and for purposes of, of, um. Uh, two point three informational, the recognition of oath of office executed and filed in the County Clerk's Office and entered into the record for Chris Casanera for the Office of Dimon County Sheriff, Daniel Gonzalez for the Office of Dimon County Attorney, Mary E. Sandoval for the Office of Dimon County Tax Assessor Collector, Jose A. Uranda for the Office of Dimon County Commissioner, Precinct One, Valerie Ulisa Talamantes for the Office of Dimon County Commissioner, Precinct Three, Rudy Lopez for the Office of Dimon County Constable, Precinct One, Andres Aramela for the Office of Dimon County Constable, Precinct Two, Robert Valdés for the Office of Dimon County Constable, Precinct Three, Manuel Rosas the Third for the Office of Dimon County Constable, Precinct Four, and Claudia McDaniel for the Office of Dimon County Clerk. Uh, again, commissioners, it's a formality that we have to do to submit to the Secretary of State. Three point three discussion and appropriate action approval for County Clerk, this Claudia McDaniel to attend the twenty twenty-five County Clerk and District Clerk's Association Winter Conference on February third and sixth in Denton, Texas. Motion by Commissioner Odena, I mean Commissioner Olsukabona, my apologies.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Salamantes, all in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries six point nine discussion and appropriate action, budget adjustment between the County Clerk's Office, number six. And my distinct understanding that is a budget adjustment for posted, um, telephone services. The, the services, uh, increased in, in price and it was not budgeted for at the time in Mr. Garcia's office, so that's what these budget adjustments were.
Judge, um, you have to report informational to the general?
Yeah, well, we have to, uh, do the actual, the formality of the recognition of the office.
So can you just correct my name? It's with the Z and goes to the N.
This is, uh, just our, our end miss and not opposing, so it's. But the actual paperwork has it the way you have it submitted. Yes, because, uh, it also says Precinct Three, which is. Thank you for verifying.
Thank you.
Um, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second. Second by Commissioner Odena, all in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries, I will. Uh, can I get a motion for Reese's and America regular meeting? So, motion by Commissioner Odena, second by Commissioner Olsukabona, all in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries.
I'm sorry. I was, I was a little late.
We have an opposition to adjourn.
I'm sorry.
We have a meeting.
I had a senior moment.
Um, Ms. McDaniel, the time now is full fourteen and we're going into the public facilities meeting. Um, just let the record reflect, Ms. McDaniel, that all connect for commissioners and county judges are present. We do have a forum. One point three approval of minutes of January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Something should be corrected.
So, motion by Commissioner Odena.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, all in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries two point one discussion and appropriate action, new business. Any new business, Commissioner Salamantes?
So we had a walkthrough of the facility, um, the sheriff's station had, um, the plumber and basically the sinks that are at the, at the bulk of the station, they're no longer gonna be carrying those parts because they're gonna transition to acorn, if I'm not mistaken. So when they came out and we did the walkthrough of the sheriff's office, they went ahead and squeezed us into the, um, schedule out of courtesy. Uh, but they are advising us that it would be in our best interest to make that upgrade with the sheriff's office so that way we don't run into issues later on not being able to find parts, uh, for those sinks and toilet areas. Uh, just informational again, uh, we did have a, what we thought was a sewage, um, overflow. Um, I ended up having the guys out there, we didn't leave until it got taken care of. It ended up not being a sewage, it was, um, from the mechanic's face. Um, but we did get a vacuum truck out there and we did vacuum out what we could, um, for safety of the horses, because if the water continued to run down, it would have run into the horse's stable. Um, so we were out there till about like nine o'clock on Friday. Um, but I'm gonna go check to make sure that the situation was rectified today before we leave. Uh, I think that's about it. Oh, we did have to walk through the facility as well.
Any questions? Motion to approve, so move, motion by Commissioner Odena. Second by Commissioner Odena, all in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries three point one discussion and appropriate action monthly report financial.
Total revenues through the end of December for the public facilities, we had three hundred and forty-two thousand, fifty-nine dollars. Expenditures of port patrol, the emergency building, seven, uh, four hundred and sixty-five and eighty-two thousand, eighty-two for the, um, port patrol.
Any questions? Motion by Commissioner Odena.
Before you, yeah, before you close it out, just a statement. I do wanna thank Commissioner Odena for helping me, um, getting me in the right direction for that. And also I had a few city, uh, officials out there and also helped me to try to see what was going on. So thank you to both of the Commissioner Odena and the two city, um, employees that went into the facility to help us.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, all in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries claim docket, public safety, thirteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-six and sixty-six cents. Motion by Commissioner Olsukabona. Second by Commissioner Odena, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the public facility meeting. Motion by Commissioner Olsukabona, who second?
Aye.
Commissioner Odena. All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries, the time is twelve nineteen and this meeting has ended, thank you.